Lori Kudisik.
Here.
Tom Hanks.
Here.
Scott Fishel.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Jessica Barnes.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
So on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting, that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. So begin with, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add executive session to discuss matters requesting to be kept confidential by state and federal law. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? You call the roll, Mr. Placko.
Lori Kudisik.
Hi.
Tom Hanks.
Hi.
Scott Fishel.
Hi.
Belinda Grassi.
Hi.
Motion carried. That will be at the end, correct? Yes. And I should note that we will be coming back then to take public action after we do the meeting. All right, a motion to approve meeting minutes for February 11th, 2022 special meeting, February 24th, 2022 special meeting, February 28th, 2022, I'm sorry, 2022 special meeting, and March 9th, 2022 special meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
No, go ahead. Any discussion? Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Scott Fishel.
Hi.
Belinda Grassi.
Hi.
Lori Kudisik.
Hi.
Tom Hanks.
Hi.
Motion carried. That brings us to special reports.
Thank you, Mrs. Kudisik. Every year, it seems, at least recently, we have exchange students coming to our school to experience what it's like in, like in the United States. And we have three this year, and they're going to give a short presentation to the board and also the community members that are in attendance. And our advisor is Mrs. Halsey, and she has done this for quite a while. Unfortunately, I think one of her kids was sick today, so she couldn't be here. But we do have Marla Herman, who's been involved in the program for many years as well, and she's going to do the introductions.
Hi, I'm Marla Herman. I've hosted for three years now. We had Christina from Greenland, we had Josie from Germany, and now, once again, we have another German with us, Lukas. So we have Lukas Royko, and he's seventeen, from Germany. He is with the group Ayusa. I'm not going to try to pronounce his whole name, but we have Gus. Gus will tell you his whole name. He and Marla are staying together with the same family, and they are with a program called United Studies. So we're going to have Lukas go up first to make his presentation.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I welcome you to my presentation. My name is Lukas Royko, I'm from Germany, and actually from northern Germany, from Hamburg, born there. And yeah, I'll tell you everything about my home overseas. So I'd like to start with the city I'm from. I'm from Hamburg. I live actually in a suburb of Hamburg, it's like twenty-five minutes away. Hamburg is, after Berlin, the second biggest, second largest city of Germany, with a population of one point eight million inhabitants. And it was, so like a lot of European countries, Germany was monarchy, and during that time, actually Hamburg was one of, like, the major city of Hamburg, of Germany, because Hamburg was always a port city, so it was really important back then, and was, in the nineteenth century, actually the second largest port in Europe, next to London. We have, in Germany, sixteen states, we're also a federalism, and Hamburg always remained a self-ruling, a ruling status, so what that basically means is that Hamburg is its own state. So same with Berlin and Bremen, those are two other big cities in Germany. So Hamburg is a pretty, also like pretty old city with old buildings, also some buildings that ever got bombed in World War II. But nowadays, again, Hamburg is a major commercial and trading center of Europe and Germany. The picture there, you can see the Capitol Building. Always when we go with friends there, we make pictures in front of the building, and it's during Christmas time, and it's like a Christmas market. All right, so here you can see a real quick picture. This is a map of Germany to the left, and there you can see the Baltic Sea is to the east, and then there's the northern sea, and Hamburg is right there, the spot that is circle, circle. And I live in between, you can't, probably can't see it, but between Bremen and Hamburg, so I live in Lower Saxony. To the right, up, you can just see the port of Hamburg. To the other side, there would be, if they would flip the camera, there would be the big, like, port with the big container ships and stuff like that, come from around the world. And on there, it's just, again, like, the other side of the Capitol Building, and where you can eat a lot of food and have, like, a lot of shops and stuff like that. So as I said, I'm not actually, I don't actually live in Hamburg, I live in Guhols. It's a suburb of Hamburg, a little city, with a population around forty thousand, probably now between forty and forty-five thousand inhabitants. It belongs to the state of Lower Saxony, and it is located in the north of the Heef. That is actually why, so that basically means why it's called Guhols in the north here, which is German, and stands for Guhols in the north of the Heef. So yeah, this is actually the Heef, I'll show you a picture. It's actually one of the biggest, like, where I live, attractions for tourists. So when, for example, my family decides one day to visit me, I would probably go on a good, on a good day during the, to the Heef. On the right side, that's kind of personal stuff, but that's my, that's like kind of downtown Guhols. Everything is really compact and together, so you walk everywhere, kind of, or go on your bike, especially teachers in the morning. So I see so many teachers in the morning driving by bike to school, which is kind of cool. Always wear your helmet. I'm not looking. And yeah. Let's talk about my school. My school in Germany, I'm going to the Albert Einstein Gymnasium. Let me just clarify that real quick, gymnasium doesn't have anything, anything to do with actually gym. That's just a part of school I go to, so basically a high school. You have three types of school in Germany, after elementary school, which is four years. You have the lowest main school called Hauptschule. You just go there till ninth grade, and then you're done. And or you go to the middle school, Real Schule, or you go to gymnasium, a gym, gymnasium. And that is, for example, I probably want to go to university after I'm done. I got thirteen years in school. And yeah, actually, my school, we accept this graduation from the school, so it's kind of cool, so I go to twelfth grade next year. My school has around two thousand students. You'd think probably it's a lot, it's not, if you think about it, it's from fifth grade up to thirteenth grade. And one big difference for me was, my school doesn't have a school sport. We don't have that, we don't have a football team, or soccer team, or baseball team, or something like that. We have PE lessons, definitely, and there are some events we have during the school year, but we don't really have, like, an Albert Einstein football team. Frightening, too. And yeah, one thing absolutely a lot of my friends love when they heard that, school starts at eight AM and goes till one fifteen PM. So it's literally six blocks, one block is forty-five minutes. Yeah, this is my school, I was, I was around thirteen years old, I say like, oh, you won't see it, but yeah. This is, yeah, my school, I don't know. And this is kind of actual stuff, this was one of my teachers, and to the left, there's a, because of Russian Ukraine thing right now, they did like a peace symbol sign, which I thought was pretty cool, I saw it on Instagram, and yeah, I just liked that, some friend sent me that. And here we come, some fun fact, and I actually got some stuff here, so, because I wanted to, like, you always want to have, like, a connection, and I thought it's, like, easy to, like, show you guys some things that you, like, probably, like, take as a good connection. So Gummy Bears, I think everybody knows what Gummy Bears are, right? So this is actually, Haribo is a German company, and you guys want some Haribos?
Ooh, I got sugar ones. Thank you. Thank you.
So, yeah, I'll more if some, if you guys want more after my presentation. So, and then, I played football here in the school, and it was one of my probably greatest experiences I've ever made. Not just that it gave me discipline, also, like, I just loved the sport, I got so many good friends, and I think also good connections, and it's just, it was really, like, a great experience. And probably, my right now favorite sport is football, and Hamburg does have a football team called the Hamburg C Devils, and they play in their international European League of Football. I thought it was kind of cool. Obviously, they're not as good as NFL teams, but yeah, there are some, some good players in there. Then, Germany is not just famous for, like, car branches, also for sport brands. So I don't know if you guys knew that, but Adidas, for example, is something, is a German company, same with Kuma, I don't know if you know Kuma. So yeah, and that was basically my presentation about me and my home overseas. Thank you very much.
So terrific, so, so you're going into thirteenth grade next year. So how was your experience here academically at Riverside?
Oh yeah, so no, I go in twelfth grade next year, I'm a junior right now, but academic wise, it was, it was good. I think, I think at the beginning, I had, like, some, some issues, I always had issues with math, but then I, I got a lot of help from, like, teachers, and they told me go to math lab, and I, right now, I got a pretty good teacher who helps me a lot and pre-talk. So yeah, I'll do that and talk a lot, but like, all in all, I do pretty good, I think, right now.
What surprised you the most about being, about being in America?
That everything's kind of spread out. So I told you guys that where I grew up, it was everything, like, I mean, I need two minutes to train station, twenty-five minutes by train into Hamburg, or like, just five minutes to go to over my friend's house and just buy every morning to school. Here it's just different, I feel like you really need a car and stuff like that, and, or need a school bus, so this was one of the things that was, like, not hard, just different for me in the beginning.
Does she make you take the school bus?
No. No.
It's a great experience.
Yeah. She should make him do that. He did, he got the school.
Yeah, yeah.
So back, back in the, I'm sorry, back in the late eighties, I actually traveled to what was then West Germany, went to Cologne. So how far are you from Cologne? I didn't see on the map.
So I'm from Cologne, like, probably around five hours, something like that.
Okay.
It's not that far, but there's no, like, plane, plane connection, because Germany's really not that big, so the only really connection to you have is, like, I think, from Hamburg to France, I think.
Yeah, I've been in Bonn, I went to Cologne, and then I actually did travel over to what was then Duisburg.
It's cool, because Bonn was, actually, the capital for, like, a, quite a time in Western Germany, right? Yeah.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Gus, and I'm from Thailand. Yeah, so my full name is Khuripad Rosamihwishai, that's my full name. And this is Bangkok. This is like my capital city of my country. You went there, like, Lukas? Yeah, he went there. Okay, and this is like Pattaya, it's a popular place in Thailand, too. And this is where I came from, it's Surat Thani. It's like in the south of my country, and we have a lot of, like, a popular place, nice beach, something like that. Oh, and we don't have snow in my country, so it's really, really hot. Now it's like ninety degrees, eighty something, yeah. So, okay, this is like marketplace, like a walking market, and this is like the food that I like to eat. And that's me. That's how I go to school.
All right, can you go back one slide?
Yeah.
So what, what, what are we looking at?
Okay, I don't know how to explain it. It's, it's sweet, it's based on...
It's like a dessert?
Yeah, it's in the middle, and the right one is kind of like a dry noodles with a lot of vegetable, or something like that.
So what are their names?
Well, in my country, the right one, we call it Sukki. Yeah, it's kind of like Chinese, something. And the middle one is Khonmeung. Oh, it's kind of like crab, a hard crab, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. And this, okay, I would say that. We drive, I mean, I drive to school in the morning, like, going evening from my school, it's my house, and, well, it's kind of a little bit dangerous, because it's like, I live in the, like, city, yeah. And it is my friend and me. And that's me, like, eighth grade, and like, mom, like, mom, you know? Yeah, and we have, like, something, I don't know, like, I always say, like...
Like an offering?
Yeah, like, they're baking for food, I don't know, not for baking, but yeah. And it's like, in the morning, like, before COVID hit, everyone in your school is gonna be, like, in the front of the school, like, we have a big field and a flag. It's kind of something like, something you're standing and the songs, something like that. But we're gonna be, like, be there in the morning, like, seven fifty till eight thirty, like, forty minutes, in the middle of the field, and it's very hot, and we're doing, I don't know, what are they doing?
Is it praying?
Yeah, pray, something like that, and the announcement, something, you know, it's really bad to have that. And this is me on the left one, I am the guy in, like, I don't know, like, the pirate, like, no, not, it's like a pirate, you know, like, a lot of people walking down the road, yeah, something like that. And that's me in the, in the gym, and I play basketball. In my country, sport is like, not really a thing, like, it's not as great as here, like, if someone wants to be, like, a basketball player, a football player, no, it's not gonna happen. We don't have NBA or something like that. And that's, the left one is my teacher, well, that's a field that's not real. And that's like a tight clothes, you know what I mean? Like, yeah. And the right one is, is the rule in my country that you have to have, like, a very short hair. Yes, so that time, I have long hair, and they just, ah, my hair. Yeah.
So this is, this is real abnormal for you, having this long hair?
Yeah, like, we, we have a really strict rule. We have uniform, did I show you uniform? Yep, yep, that's the uniform. Yeah, and, like, girl have to have, like, a short hair, like, over here, and everyone have to, everyone have black hair, so you can dye your hair, something like that, like, very strict. Oh, that's all.
So what do you think about snow?
Oh, oh, I actually have experienced with snow before. I went to Japan. Oh, one more thing. My flight from my country to here, like, the whole process, it's like twenty-six hours. Yeah, it's like six hour, six hours from Thailand to Japan, and twelve hour from Japan to Dallas, and two hours, something, I don't know, from Dallas to Cleveland. I have to wait, like, two or three hours in between, it's very long.
What did you do during that?
Oh, my arm, I went to snowboarding, and I fall back fit, and then my whip is just, and I'm gonna remove it tomorrow. Yay!
Did you wear that one?
Yeah.
So what was the biggest surprise for you when you came to America? What was the biggest surprise? What was the most surprising thing?
Oh, well, actually, this is kind of like inappropriate thing, like, well, can I say it, like?
Well, I don't know. So, so if, if, if you think that it's, it might be inappropriate, then maybe you shouldn't say it. So what's your, what's your second most...
Well, school bus. We don't have school bus in my country. Yeah, well, the first thing is, like, I saw a lot in the movies, like, people, like, hugging, kissing, something like that, and I didn't expect it, like, to be really, really like this. I went to, like, some, what is that, homecoming, and I saw a kid, like, whoa.
What'd you think of the food?
Oh, food, well, I feel like a lot of food is, like, salty, very salty, and a lot of fat, something like that, yeah. Really great food.
So apparently, you think Americans are very friendly.
Yeah.
Last question, so, so we heard about, a little bit from Lukas, that he's, he's probably going to want to university. What are, what are your plans after you're done with high school?
Oh, like, actually, I changed plan, like, a lot of time, like, you know? And the last thought in my head is, like, after this school year, I go back to my country and maybe I'm gonna quit the school. And, well, my parents have, like, this, yeah, something like that. But actually, why I quit the school is, there's no point going to school for me anymore, because I want to get back here to have college here, and, like, the degree in my country is not approved here, so I don't need it anymore. And school in my country is, like, not real education, not really good, like, they all, as I say, like, there is no sport, no, like, funding in school, no activity, like, all just reading for the tests, and, you know, not good.
So what do you want to pursue, what, what do you want to do for a degree if you came here?
Oh, I want to go to modern school, like, a business.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Marla, I'm from Germany as well. I'm actually from Lower Saxony as well. This is just, like, some very famous places in Germany, this is the Brandtburger Gate, it's like a really popular tourist spot in Berlin. This is the castle of Roshmanstein, some people probably have heard of it, it's, like, very popular internationally. It's actually, the castle is the inspiration for Walt Disney, for the Disney castle. This is our capital Berlin, it's in Berlin, it's called the Reichshaus. This is where, where politic, politicians need and have all the decisions made. So I live in Brunswick. The name is probably very familiar to some people, because there's a place near here called Brunswick as well. There where the rest flies, you can see where that is, it's pretty close to Hannover and, like, two hours from Hamburg. We all, we have, like, a population of two hundred and fifty people, and it's the second biggest city in Lower Saxony, which is my state, we have sixteen states. This is just, like, an overview of my city. Everything is pretty close together, red roofs are very popular in Germany. That is actually a famous dome, not a dome, it's a cathedral. That is our, it's called the Burgplatz, it's where the dome is at, and that's our, the lion is our city symbol, because the founder of Brunswick was called Heinrich the Lion, that's why we have a lion symbol. And those houses are, like, very popular in Germany, they're, like, very old, have those wooden seals in them, and, yeah, they're very pretty. This is my city during Christmas time. Christmas markets are, like, very popular in Germany, they're very pretty. It's, everything is light up, they're smooth with hot chocolate, you can just get everything, and it's a nice spot to go with your friends, do some stuff, yeah. So my school in Germany, that's actually my school, it's not a pretty building, we can't paint it another color, because it's actually an old station for Hitler's soldiers, they were seated there, and before it got renovated from the inside, there were actually, like, those booths in the wall where you could see that they could put their weapon in, which was kind of crazy to see, but yeah. It's not like here, we all stay in the same class for whole middle school. Middle school goes for six years, primary school is four years, middle school six years, and then high school, or we call it Abitur, which is, like, the highest level of graduation, is three years. So you stay in the same class all the time, like, it's, kind of, here it is, the students switch, and the teachers stay in the same room, but in Germany, it's like, the students stay in the same room and the teachers switch. So, yeah, students also, at most schools, I think, don't choose their classes, they get the classes kind of scheduled for them, like, there's classes you have to take or have to have. And that changes in high school, where you can, like, choose your own classes, which is why, when I go back to Germany, I'm switching schools, because it's a little bit more difficult than my school in Germany. We don't have school tours, like here, we have, like, slots you can do outside of school. I'm in a basketball club in Germany, and I think it's pretty cool to have, this is an opportunity, because we do a lot of traveling, we went to Sweden, Vienna, Berlin, like, we travel a lot to different countries, which is pretty easy in Europe, so yeah. Yeah, that's pretty much it, all right.
Gosh, I have a question for you. So what did you find most, most surprising when you got here?
So most surprising, I think, was, probably, I didn't expect the food to be different, but it was very different from what I'm used to. I like, I missed stuff, like, in Germany, bread is a big thing, like, we have bakeries with all kinds of bread, and I can't miss that.
And what are you planning to do after, after school?
So currently, I'm a junior, so I still have two more years to go, and when I graduate, I probably want to study abroad. I wanted to study in England, but because they just got out of the European Union, it's kind of hard to do, so maybe I'll study here, go to college here, I don't know, I'll see.
Okay, and do you have a, a subject or a vocation in mind?
Um, not really, it's something in an art direction, like, something artistic.
Can we just take it all three, you guys up front for a picture? We're gonna do all three, you guys, just take a quick photo.
You wanna hold your gum, anybody?
I can't.
They need the beaver.
Hey, I'm...
The beaver is still cool.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah.
Any other special reports?
That's all.
Okay. All right, that brings us to old business, any old business?
So I, I do, just to follow up with, at the last meeting, we actually, we had a special meeting to discuss sending a letter off to Auburn Career Center about their new admissions policies and everything else, and so I... And I say, I, I know that we maybe have some, some information on, on how Riverside fared under the new guidelines, but I just wondered if we had heard back from anything, uh, in general from our, from our letter and if we had any more clarification on their actual process of, of admissions.
Well, I think I heard, uh, I talked to Dr. Bontempo once, since, where we, I know there was some discussion about something that the ODE put out in May of 2020 line that suggested that, you know, schools not based some of their decisions on what they were basing it on in years past. Um, that's not here nor there, uh, I know because it is a break from the tradition from their school. Um, I, I, I do know that they are looking into maybe some other options to possibly expand, but I don't think they're at to the point where they can commit to anything right now. Um, I don't want to speak on behalf of Auburn either, but I do know that it's not necessarily over yet. Um, and they're doing what they can to try to, I know, accommodate as many students as they, it appears that they're looking at some options. I, I don't know what all of it entails, but that's what I was told. We do have, um, some information as well. Um, Mrs. Krenisky asked for it right before break of what it looked like in terms of the number of students in our district that applied for it and how many actually got in the past years. I know Dr. Malacher had put something together for the board to take a look at.
Did I send it?
You did.
Okay. I felt nervous that I actually thought about sending it, but then I didn't, so.
I may have, I may have missed it, sorry.
Oh.
It was in our email.
Okay, yeah, okay, so I did, I think I sent it yesterday. Do you want me, yeah, do you want me just, real quick? So the information that I sent, there's probably 11 pages worth of information because I had actually been collecting it or asked Scott Bayless, uh, head of guidance to just start collecting because I was interested in what programs our students were applying for, you know what I mean? Applying for, how many were getting accepted, like I just wanted that background information. So most of this existed before you even asked for it, Mr. Krenisky. Um, so what I did is I went to the last page and I summarized it. Interestingly enough, um, we as, as a district did not take a hit, it does not appear at this point, in the number of students who were accepted, the percentage of students who were accepted out of the number of students who applied. Here's what I will tell you, and I have one piece of information left that I asked her then, that, from them, that may change what we're looking at. So we went back six years, that's, you got that just because that's what I was looking at? Do you remember when we started collecting the data, that's just what I had? So 17, 18, 61% of the students that applied were accepted. Now I didn't break this down, although it is broken down in other areas as to who got their first choice, what programs they went into, this is just a general kid, number of kids that got in. 18, 19, 64% got in, 19, 20, 62% got in. Here's where I'm gonna pause and say that's our last, what I consider to be, and I don't care how long we go out, I will maintain 2021 data and 2122 data is always gonna be a little wonky in education because it's really tough to compare, you know what I mean, because of the COVID situation. So 1920 was our last regular, everybody in school comparable year. Now 2021, 80% of our students were accepted, but I don't know, and then 89% of our kids in 2122. I asked Auburn for the total number of applicants. Because what I'm interested in is, did the number of applicants drop over those two years? And that's why our percentage went up? I don't know that for sure, okay? So that data sits where it is as a spike in the, in the continuum, but without that additional information, I don't know that it's fair to make an assumption. And then this year, or, or projected for next year, for 22, 23, 70% of our students who applied were accepted. Now that is subject to change because everything hasn't shaken out, but it looks like pre-pandemic and now, we're, we're actually higher right now than we were pre-pandemic. So that's the information that I had, um, that's the information I shared with you. If you've had any, I put those notes at the bottom of that chart. They're just things to think about when you're looking at this data. Um, it, it does not look like our accepted rate was impacted by the change in the application process. Again, I don't know that for sure when you take out the two COVID years. So that's the information that you have. And then you can dig a little deeper if you want, there's by program and, and kids who got their first choice and their second choice and all that kind of stuff, so.
That's all in there.
Yep.
There's a lot of different data, so.
So do you go again, what did Dr. Bontempo mention to you? I, I, you mentioned, you talked about it, but I'm not sure I would say anything.
Yeah, well, I think they're, I think they're, from what I understand, it looks like they're maybe looking at a couple of options uh, to possibly see if they can take more kids. I don't think he really wanted it out there so much because they're not sure yet what that looks like, how much it's gonna cost and everything else. So here I am at public meetings, saying that, but I mean.
But you're on the spot, it's not your fault.
No, but you know what, it's, it's like, it's one of those things, if, if, when you're in this type of business, you want to obviously accommodate as many kids as you possibly can that are interested in the programs that you have to offer. Um, to me, that's a no-brainer, you would expect that to happen, uh, you know, in, in any school. Uh, so I'm hoping it does, but I, again, I don't have any control over necessarily what they do or what, you know, the policies that they approve. But I would hope that they would turn over every rack that they possibly can to see what they can do about taking kids that are interested in being there.
Exactly, so it's, I think there was consensus on the board, so just for everybody here, on March 9th, I believe it was, we had a meeting to talk about sending a letter off to, to Auburn. Career Center just talking about the change in how they have done admissions and, you know, at that point, we had no idea whether or not it's gonna impact Riverside, possibly or negatively, or not at all. Um, but one of the things that we, we definitely had strong consensus on, I feel, for the board was that, that, you know, we're all about increasing opportunity. And so if we can be, we, Riverside can be partners with them in expanding opportunity, we, I think we did something on those lines with the welding lab and kind of the consortium we have with, with other, a couple of other districts. Let's, let's, let's expand the pie, not, not try to figure out different ways of, of building it up.
Not necessarily arguing whether or not the process is the right way or the wrong way. I can honestly say that for all the heat that Auburn is taking right now and everything else, I understand parents are angry with, with some of the decisions that were made. Um, I got the impression that they're at least trying to do something. I don't think it's over yet, that's the impression I got, to, to at least credit, uh, Dr. Bontempo. I didn't get the impression that he's throwing down the gauntlet saying it's done. I didn't get that impression at all, I think, I think they're trying to figure something out.
Yep, that is one of the reasons why I asked for the data, I wanted to see like if we did take a big drop, where were our kids interested, what did they want to look at? And I'm sure you're discussing that from a curriculum perspective anyways, is there anything else that we can do, um, like the welding lab or what other opportunities there are?
That's actually part of the reason why I started pulling the data to begin with, as we were looking at programming and how are we gonna grow and what new things should we be adding? I wanted an idea of what were kids applying to and not getting into because there wasn't enough room. So that's exactly why I started looking at that information.
I, I, on behalf of our district chairman, I'm encouraging them to continue to do what they need to do and book. You know, if they can, need help from us in any which way they can, I would consider it well.
And we offered that in a letter we sent, but, you know, we'd love to collaborate and, and talk, so. Any other discussion on Auburn? Any other old business? Alright, um, new business, we do have some, do you want to start, Mr. Hat?
I, I could, although I, Mrs. Grausy was, was first, she beat me out, so if you want to go in front, I'll have to order up proposals.
Take stamp?
Right, that would be.
Go ahead, because I think you touched on some of the things that I.
So I, I actually, I have, uh, two, two items. Um, and, and I will, I'm gonna, uh, so we, we had conversations as well, as, if anybody's been following the news and, and what have you, you, you know, because of the response to the coronavirus, that, that we are academically behind, um, in most instances. I, some, some districts seem to be two years behind, others maybe not so far. And so, uh, there's a question of, you know, where exactly Riverside is relative to where we would be if, if the coronavirus response had not been in place. And, and I'm looking to, to find out what, what that delta is. And then, and then, you know, based on that delta, maybe in April, we can get more of an assessment on what, how we might close that delta to get us back to where we should be, especially, you know, hopefully going forward, we won't have any issues, but, but certainly for the kids that are in school today, how do we, how do we close that gap so that we are graduating people, students with, with the skillsets that previous generations got?
I know the request we received from you, uh, was yesterday, really. Um, Dr. Malacher was, I had some of that information, I was wanting some more information, but I wanted to make sure that we had it on the April board being, just to give us a little bit more time to put it in a more coherent presentation to the board and also to the community.
Are you, are you okay if I hand out this?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so again, checkbox number two, this was data I already had, um, because I was curious about the same thing and tracking, um, kind of how our students are doing. So I wanted to take a look at this because without an explanation, perhaps no one other than you might know. It's a lot of numbers, but it's kind of formatted in the weird way that my mind works and how I wanted to look at it, so. What you're gonna get are cohorts of students and test scores go pretty much for the entire cohort. So down, uh, look at the side that says English, English Language Arts scores first, okay? Because that's where I put a couple of notes. So what you see down the side there is first you see the kids' graduation year. So top, graduation year 2030, they haven't started taking any tests yet. That's why there's no scores there, okay? So class of 2029, they started taking tests in 2020. That's what, so that's what that means, that's why I have those, there was a reason I was looking at that when I started, which is not necessarily here nor there right now. But, so that in third grade, that cohort of students scored a 56.7. Okay, that was the number of kids that we had pass the English Language Arts test in the spring of 2020, that third grade class. Okay? If you go down, what, how you can use this is two different ways. So you can look down, straight down the third grade column, and you can see all of our third grade scores, just in third grade, how each class did in third grade. Okay? And how they've changed over the years. The other thing that you can look at here is you can look across, and this is part of what I wanted to do because I sometimes get nervous about looking at data for groups of kids and comparing what appears not to be apples to apples. Because sometimes you get an overall group of kids that is really strong and sometimes you get a, a group of kids that perhaps is not as strong in test taking. So you can also look across, and you'll see this shows a cohort of students, I wrote all the way across on the right-hand side. You can look at how one cohort of student has done across their grade level. So if you look at, let's say, the class of, we look at the class of 2022, right now, kids getting ready to graduate it. They started taking tests in 2013. As third graders, they scored an 87.7. Their English II, and this was a huge jump for us, so when they were 10th graders, English II is typically 10th grade, 75.3 were proficient on their first try. So you see how you can use this two different ways? So it gives you a baseline, it doesn't drill down, we've also talked about growth and using math scores for that. And if you flip it over, you have math scores. Okay? So you can start to digest a little bit of this because me throwing you, just like I'm doing right now and giving it to you, you need a, a chance to look at it and digest it a little bit. And then in April, we'll come back and you'll have, you know, you'll have had a chance to look at this, you can ask me questions and we can talk about what we're doing and things we're putting in place. You'll also see when we do the strategic plan, how that ties into some of, I think, what, what the concern is. Um, I don't think we're super far off, we are. Definitely you're gonna see a difference in the scores from, you know, over the years, but I, we're not years and years behind, I don't think, I don't, because I think we have been in person all year this year, okay? And even last year, most of our students were in person, even with some restrictions, I think has worked to our benefit.
So can I ask a good question? This is just, this is basically saying, okay, from year to year, the same class in the columns, right? Like seeing, looking at them and saying.
It's the same class in a row.
Right, so.
If you look in a column, you see third grade, oh, you following me?
Yeah, I get it, but if I'm looking across these rows, I'm saying that class is fairly consistent across the board from year to year. The columns is where I, like, I need to start to get a little bit of concern. But then I'm asking, when I'm looking at the column, right? How much of that is not as objective because you're not comparing apples to apples testing? Like is there, is there more to it than, than just, than just the test? Because is the test different because maybe the requirements are different or they're asking different material and how we have to cover more, like is that part of this? And that can't really be factored in, that's hard to factor in when you're.
It is, there are a lot of variables, that's why you can't just take, you can't just say, this year we got a, an 85 and every year from here on out, we should get an 85. Education doesn't work like that, there are so many variables that could affect a score, um, that, but it, but it gives us trends and we can look at it in more general terms as to how, there's been years that we changed curriculum because we thought it was a better curriculum. Well, that takes some time for the teachers to get better at teaching. Um, I will tell you, our English II scores this year were, I was super proud of the jump that they had made over the years and I attribute that to the implementation of the pre-AP curriculum. And a, a, just a stronger base in ninth and 10th grade for those students, a more rigorous curriculum that I think is raising the bar for all of them, so. So we will read this in, in April, but this gives you guys, like I said, a, a basis now for starting to think about what kinds of questions you have and, and if you want to send me questions, that would be helpful to guide what we talk about in April. You know, because I can throw a bazillion things at you that may or may not be relevant to what you are really curious about.
So I, I think, at least from my perspective, if, if we could get an assessment of, of the delta between what you, where we are versus what we would expect to be if we, you know, if we had a more normal environment. And I, I know there, there might be some caveats, you might be an asterisk on that, you know, but, but I mean, we need to assess the, the potential impact of what happened with the coronavirus to, to where we are and then, you know, determine how we are able to, to maybe close that gap. And I, I know that there, there, it's, there's not just one variable that we're working with, so like, it's a little bit more complex. I, I understand what you're saying, but, but by the same token, we should be able to get rid of some of that noise and figure out where we are and, and then come up with, with, uh, you know, what that delta is.
So we won't have, actually, with your okay, I almost want to say if we could do this in May instead, because we will have, we'll have scores back from, from some of the tests that actually we could look at. Otherwise, we're gonna use last year's data.
Okay, and definitely we should use this year's data.
You know what I mean, like I can include that in here, so maybe we could put it on May's agenda if that would be, because I know that some, like the language arts stuff will be coming back in at the beginning of May. So because of, because it's computerized and they're starting to test next week, actually.
Will you have enough time to put it together?
Well, right now it's just me plugging numbers in, so that, that's actually Cynthia plugging numbers in, to be honest with you. Um, some of the other stuff, the map data and that kind of stuff, I can look at and do some comparables with that.
Um, I, I think it would be helpful to understand some of the variables, right? So you're, they're in here, if you can help us understand what some of those variables are.
Okay.
I, I'm trying to find, I, 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 actually I've got one more thing, but you can, you can. I, I'm just, I'm, sorry, I'm updating.
Did you want me to?
What, what did you, what? I'm updating my calendar and just.
So I, um, Dr. Kalas had, had sent out an email that talked about voucher legislation and I said that maybe we should talk about some, some action that we could take in the board. I know that, um, Mr. Placco and Dr. Kalas and I have gone down to test. I know that Mr. Clacco and Dr. Kales and I have gone down to testify at the State House previously on that topic. And I don't know if that's something of interest that we might want to do in the future. Gary sent out some information. Can you share some of that? Because there's, it's a hot topic right now.
Yeah, there's been a coalition that, that was formed of, of public school districts that were affected by vouchers given to students to attend private schools. And some of the challenges with that and the issues that that causes, there's, I think there's more than 100 districts now as part of that coalition, they filed a lawsuit, I think in early January against the state of Ohio, basically saying vouchers are unconstitutional and taking away funding from public education, and basically taking money away from the, you know, constitutional current, by free and appropriate education, all students in a common system. And so there's, that litigation was filed in January, I believe it was, and just, they're looking for more districts to add into that coalition. I think the, the fee to join is $2 per student, I believe is what they were asking before I go back and look, I don't have it in front of me. You know, with this, with the changes in the way school funding is, we were never a voucher district other than when Ed Choice almost became a voucher district. With the new fair school funding plan now, vouchers aren't deducted directly from school districts anymore. This comes out of the same state line budget that public education comes out of too. So I think that, you know, back when that choice happened, it was, we were going to have a $1.7 million reduction in funding from that that ended up being reversed, where, you know, the funding has changed a little bit, and so it's a little more dynamic, I think. There used to be, you know, other districts such as, I think that were significantly, you know, affected by, by vouchers. And there's, you know, there's a lot of arguments for and against, and I think, you know, a lot of it is, you know, if a student, you know, public education, you accept all students, where non-public education, they can, they can choose which students they have. And also the funding model, I don't quote me the exact amounts, but I believe elementary vouchers is around $4,000, $200 or so per student, and high school vouchers are around $6,500, somewhere in that range, I don't know exactly on that. And it's just kind of, I always find it's a little odd that if a student that's in a district that qualifies for vouchers, you know, gets $6,000 plus dollars to go to a private school, why do we get significantly less than that? Because we get around $1,200 a student here. So, you know, I always find that quite odd, namely, the fair school funding plan coming in, you know, it's even a bigger gap.
And I, I think the consensus of that, or the, the reason for that email was that coalition had sent an email asking for more districts to be participants in their coalition. But I, but I do feel like actively going down and, and speaking at the State House and whatever, having a louder participatory voice in what happens when there is legislation that we, I think, as a board can agree on that we don't agree on. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I, I, I don't believe that if you want to do some, let me take a step back. If you want to do something on your own, you should be able to go and do that on your own. But as a district, when we participate in something, I believe that that should be unanimous, all five board members should be on board with that, if we're going to ask the representatives of the district to go and do that.
Yeah, our district had impacted by that when we presented testimony at the State House in February of 2020, the impact on Riverside would have been $1.7 million, I think.
And so, and I, I do think that as a result of the amount of people that were actively speaking at those sessions, really did impact a little bit what happened with the fair school funding plan and how that all came to be in the first place. So it does matter, but I, I do kind of think that if we're going to ask district representatives to do that, we should be a little bit more unanimous if we're going to ask the district to do that.
So are, so, just a, I'm sorry, do you have anything else? So are we, are we talking two different things? So Ed Choice is one thing, and then fair funding is a separate issue?
Fair funding, it was, it's a coalition, it's a group, it's kind of like, what is the one that we belong to for, with the Dr. Callow?
That's the line for high quality education, that's a different.
It's a different, but it's, it's similar.
But, so, and maybe, go ahead.
So basically, the, with the implementation of the fair school funding plan, which is a new funding model for.
Which is what we live under now.
Which is what we live under now. They changed it to vouchers, so they're no longer directly coming out of the school district's budget, they come from the state budget. They come from the same pot of money that public education's funded. So, you know, if, if we become a voucher district, we wouldn't see a direct hit, but it continues to come out of that state budget line, and then, so, you know, the more money goes towards vouchers, the less money goes towards public education.
And I think the concern there is if a student were coming to Riverside, he might bring in the $1,200, but they have a voucher, they get the $6,000, you know, that's it. So.
So $1.7 million that Superintendent Kales just spoke of, is this now separated by the new way of funding? So that wouldn't happen, or that would happen underneath this funding?
It would, it would no longer directly affect us.
So that was a direct hit?
This is, this is the insurance program that, that's for.
Okay, so that's, that would be a direct hit to the school. Now it goes into the whole pot of funding.
Right. And currently, there's, I don't know how much of the state budget, but it's, it's pretty significant amount goes to vouchers currently.
Which leaves less for public education.
Right. But, but to be an Ed Choice school, you have to be a failing school, correct?
It was based on report cards or.
We weren't, we, we weren't an Ed Choice school.
Right, right. And, and, so, so, as, as I look at, at things, if, there's, there's no perfect, right? This is way, this, this whole funding environment is, is far too complex, and there, there're going to be winners and losers, no matter what choice you make. But, but it seems to me that, that if a district is not effectively educating, i.e. they're failing, I just, I, I am reticent to, to, to deny parents of students in that district options to, to pursue other things. I mean, why, why, why should we, why should there not be pressure on that district to improve? And, and there's no effect, more effective pressure on a district than financial?
And I, I would agree with that, I'm not arguing that, but I believe that that should be coming out of the state budget in a different bucket, because at the end of the day, it still does affect what is available and what is left for our district indirectly. And, and again, it's, it's something I think that as a topic of conversation, when there are opportunities, that we should have those conversations at this table, so maybe we have some consensus on how we feel about that topic. So you're not asking right now for us to consider joining the litigation? No, I'm not. I'm just saying that that was a, that was a proposal, I read the legislation, I read about it, you know, I know that we had gone down previously to speak on it.
When we testified against the Ed Choice vouchers, one of my arguments is, you know, we're a public school district, we're receiving state money, everything's public record, you know, we're organized under state, everyone has their financials, any records anybody wants that, not, you know, it's public record, that's it. A private school is accepting state money, and they have none of those requirements, no public record requirements, no report card requirements. So here, you know, this public school district has a report card that says this is how you're performing, the private school does not, and we're going to give money to go to the private school.
And they're not evaluating us by the same metric at all.
And it's like, we should always be on even playing field and assessed the same way. And, you know, to me, if, you know, a public school district has to accept everybody, who a private school is going to accept vouchers, they should accept everybody.
And maybe, maybe at the end, it's really, it wasn't really about vouchers, per se, in the topic of conversation that I wanted to bring to the board table, it's just the fact that we should be more legislatively active, but we should be, we should be at least unanimous in what it is that we want to pursue as a district to be legislatively active about other things, that if you have a personal interest, you can go and do that on your own, right? And not represent the district, that's perfectly your right as an individual. But I feel like sometimes, as a school district, you can carry more weight when you actually go down as a unified front, as a school district, to have a, have, have a statement about something that they're doing there that can affect everybody here. It's powerful.
Focus series, the strategic plan that we're going to talk about today is advocacy for public education, not only Riverside, but just generally public education.
I read part of the filing, I didn't read through the whole thing. Do we know if they have heard arguments yet?
I don't think it's gotten to that point of.
You know, and there are plenty of topics that come up that, that I think we have an opportunity, I know the OSBA, they come out all the time, call for action, you know? And that maybe at those times, when they're asking for that, maybe we should start to consider those kinds of things. So Mr. Hap will start picking that up, as for our other new business that we're going to talk about here in a moment, right? As he's getting updated on the legislation platform and so forth, right?
Yep.
So. That was my new business.
All right. So, so I am the OSBA legislative liaison, and OSBA is the Ohio School Board Association. And they have a platform that they put in place that, that drives, among other things, it drives what their lobbyists do in the State House, right? So, so Ohio School Board Association has lobbyists, the, the lobbyists, basically, their marching orders are what's part of the platform. So on an annual basis, Ohio School Board Association opens up their, the platform to input from, from districts to make changes. And, and I know some, some other folks in, in other, other districts, and one of the things that came to my attention is a resolution that would modify the, the platform for Ohio School Board Association. And it's, it's five pages, I certainly will not read it, and, and we can address it in the, the April meeting if, if we so choose. But the, the, the basic premise of it is to more formalize what parents' rights are as far as transparency within the, the district. And that's, it's, it's, the section is parental right to know, and there are, you know, probably 13 or 14 different points that, that talks about different things that, that I think would be important from a transparency perspective, that, that would make sense from my perspective if the lobbyists on behalf of OSBA were advocating for.
Is this, Tom, is this something that they've already come out and proposed to be part of their, like, have they lined items that already?
This is, no, this, are you, OSBA?
Mm-hmm.
No, this is something that would be proposed, and there's a, the deadline is, is May 31st.
So you're suggesting that we propose that for them?
Right. Well, this is a resolution.
A platform agenda.
A platform agenda item that other districts are looking at as well, to be perfect, you know, try to be totally clear. And.
Who came up with this?
So it's, Mark, me and Mark.
Like, was it put forth by a specific district, I'm just curious?
They represent, they represent some school districts in northeast Ohio, from what I remember.
They do. And actually, I believe they actually represent other, so, so they are, so in a nutshell, we won't go through all the details, but I can provide a copy to you, Mr. Clacco, and we could add it to, to board docs, so that it's, it's, okay, terrific. So it's, it's, it's about transparency, parental right to know, and then it does say, OSBA, this is shorter, would oppose legis, oppose legislation that restricts the rights of parents to provide their opinions with school districts as guaranteed under the law, but not limited to the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. And they would also oppose, restricts the rights of parents to access public meetings and records as guaranteed under the law, including but not limited to Ohio Open Meeting Act and Ohio Public Records Act. So they would keep, keep what we have and then, and try to expand it. So I, unless there are questions, I, you know, I won't pursue this any further, but, but I do think it would be worthwhile for us to consider at the, at the April meeting.
When, when, when are those platform agenda items due to OSBA?
May, May 31st, exactly.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
So when I was reading through this, and I didn't dig into it real, get too far into it, but I read through it, a lot of this, it looks like, I didn't see anything glaring that goes against what we're doing a lot today anyway. So I don't know, did you see anything jump out that said, like, concerns about what we're doing today?
Let, let me answer that, then Tom can answer. So I'm saying basically the same thing. I'm a little bit older, so going back in, in, in the school years, a lot of this, as I read it, the same as, you know, Ms. Krenski is saying, is that it's basically unstated items that are now being stated in here, is how I would put it.
That's what I felt.
It's verbalized here.
Right. So none of it was kind of surprising, I guess, when I took my first glance at it?
Right, no, it's, it's, and it's, it's not, but it's, it would, you know, potentially head off anything that Mike or Taylor thinks. And that, that's, to me, that's, that's important, and, and, and we, she would happen. To, to be more clear about the process, as I understand it, the platform committee, the deadline is May 31st, they will actually start meeting in, in August to finalize that, and then I suspect it would go before the, the Capitol Conference.
No, no.
Correct.
Do they have information, I think, that gets mailed out with the board packets and whatever, who would you, and then you vote on it something November meeting? So, Mr. Hap, would your intention then be for in April, let's have a vote on it to adopt the resolution possibly?
Correct, yes, yes, exactly.
And then, I'm introducing a resolution to hire a new deputy, and Superintendent Kales has been in communications with entities and people, and as I understand, a lot of board members, and pretty much ready to move forward on it, so it's just a formal introduction of a resolution to hire a new deputy, and for everyone here, it would just help to make a little safer environment in the district. And when you look at other districts and the deputies they have, we're a little bit behind on the number we have, so adding one would help us catch up a little bit.
Yeah, things have, things have been getting better at the campus, just because there's a little, there's more people in the hallways, we're monitoring bathrooms, bathrooms are always a problem place, because there's, there's no cameras in there, it's like a kind of, we have 10 bathrooms on the whole campus here, it's hard to cover all of them. That's not really the whole reason why we're hitting another SRO. We've been talking about this for now a couple of years. Couple of years ago, I wanted at least a deputy act removed, and, you know, there's a difference between how we pay SROs and how we pay the people that work at the door here. And we still, the, the department, the chief's department has been really good about trying to work with us, but what we would like to see is, we have one SRO in the entire district with 4,300 kids, and the SRO is able to do some things that some of the other fellows can't do at the door, although that doesn't mean that they can't in the future, because they are getting trained eventually to do some of the other things. But you spread pretty thin ones. So if something happens at the middle school or the elementary school, you have to leave here. And if you think about it, we do have two schools here, and we have 1,800 kids, we have the second largest high school in Lake County with one SRO. You look at other school districts, they have multiple ones, some, some have, I believe, one in every building that, that they have. So we thought that it might not be a bad idea to explore the idea of getting another one, maybe at the other end of the building, and if something were to happen in the other schools, and our SRO, one of them would have to leave, we'd still have one here. And I think it's, it's something we really ought to look at.
Right. And I, as I understand it, the training will be actually at a little bit higher level than what we currently have. And, and part of the process is that once an agreement is made with the district and the sheriff's department, then it goes to the Lake County Commissioners, and they've already assured me that they will go ahead and immediately put out for hire and training, which the district does not pay for. So all that would be in action, so all we have to do is go ahead and, and at the next meeting, approve it, vote it, and the ball will be moving forward.
I had a discussion with Popizso, who actually was one of our SROs a few years ago, and he's now kind of the liaison, and he's doing what he can to get the ball moving. So we're hoping to have someone in place by next year.
Any other new business? That'll take us to the committee and liaison reports. First up is business advisory, which is myself. We did not have anything this past month for business advisory. That'll take us to Mr. Fischel and the Curriculum and Programming Committee and Alumni Association.
Yeah, so the Alumni Association, always looking for new members, so anyone that has graduated from Riverside, please contact the Alumni Association and join if you're not a member. Also, the Alumni Association, if anyone would know of anyone that would want to join and become treasurer, they're looking for someone to help out. And they're going to have a golf outing and a duck race, which are fundraisers. And there's also going to be a dinner, uh, which the date is to be announced, uh, to induct people into the Hall of Fame. So that's the quick update on the Alumni Association and on curriculum. Dr. Malacher and, and Jen Harden and myself will be meeting on Monday. And diving a little bit deeper into, um, curriculum and, and maybe trying to see how we can catch up a little bit from the laps from the COVID times and see what areas we might be able to make some improvements. And, uh, so we'll be starting to discuss that on Monday.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hack, Buildings and Grounds in operation and legislative?
Um, Buildings and Grounds will meet, uh, next Wednesday, April sixth, at, at seven AM. And, um, uh, and I, I guess, so, so, uh, Mr. Arslak, the, um, so the, if any of you have students at Lamuth, you know that there's been a, we had an issue with heating and that, that, which we understood may be a possibility. I think we, we knew what we were going to do and have implemented a, a mobile boiler. But, uh, Mr. Arslak, if you could, could just give us an update on that, that would be terrific.
The boiler is in place. Um, it is being monitored morning, noon, and night. Um, it's just, it has been a very uphill challenge, uh, maintaining the heat just from the fact that we're bringing in a boiler which has different diameter lines and, um, a different pumping system than what we currently have in the school. With that said, my maintenance department has done a hell of a job over the last three and a half weeks, uh, maintaining the heat in the schools so we can continue to have classes. Uh, the temperatures are warming up, has helped us a little bit this week. Uh, but we will continue to monitor it. And, you know, just a matter of what Mother Nature throws at us the next three to five to six weeks as to how much longer we need to have this unit in place. Um, some of the, uh, issues we have experienced, I have logged. And I have spoken to our engineer and our architect that is going to be overseeing and working with me on the new boiler implementation this summer. Um, they have taken that data, they have discussed it, um, they've looked over some of the items. And they feel that they are very confident, to the point of ninety-nine point nine percent, that what we are experiencing now is just two different entities coming together to create heat. And that, uh, when a new system goes in, we will not be experiencing these issues, which, and they were very grateful that I did bring it to the forefront, just to make sure that we were not missing anything before we did walk into the, into the project. And I was explaining to them that I refused to come back to this committee and say that we needed more money. And they understand that. So, um, we are doing our due diligence and we are very happy to have heat, um, through these weeks.
Absolutely. And then thank you to you and the staff for keeping it online. And then we do, as part of the Buildings and Grounds, uh, set agenda, we are approving the, we'll consider approving the, the contract to, to install the boiler so that we will not have this issue next, next year. Um, and then I, I don't have anything in addition to the legislative and liaison, other than what I picked up earlier, so.
Thank you. And then Policy Committee Booster Organization Liaison is Mrs. Harden, she's not here, I don't know.
I do, I'm sorry, I don't have anything, sorry.
Policy meeting will be on April twelfth, like, we need to go over the next, uh, policies and post-it committee meeting once those are, are ready to be reviewed.
Um, next is the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Krenski. As you know, um, we're going to present a, a strategic plan, um, framework to the board, uh, tonight. Uh, we started the strategic planning process a year ago, and as most of the board members know that are on the, on the board. Uh, we used Patty Kozel as our external facilitator for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand sixteen strategic plan. What I, what I've noticed is that in the past, and I've been in the district quite a bit, uh, for quite a long time, that past strategic items, they look pretty good, and we've kind of put them up on a shelf. And, uh, they weren't as practical as the ones that we had, at least in two thousand thirteen and sixteen. Patty and her, um, colleagues have done a great job keeping us focused on having ones that are practical, that are measurable, ones that are attainable, and ones that we can adjust where we see we, we need to adjust. And, uh, like I said, this, this process started back in, uh, March of twenty twenty-one. I think the Board of Education at that time approved the contract with the EPI. Uh, and we used Patty and, and Lisa to facilitate our strategic plan. Lisa Rigo is, uh, one of her colleagues. Uh, we did a survey, uh, we conducted with the Board of Education and the District Administrators and Directors at that same time, developed some type of baseline to, from, from where we wanted to start with this. Um, we knew that some of the items of focus areas that we had on the two thousand thirteen, two thousand sixteen strategic plan would overlap the current one, but we wanted to make sure that we updated it in areas that we thought needed attention. So, uh, April of, uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, we developed, uh, focus areas and potential, potential action steps. In May of twenty twenty-one, EPI conducted one, uh, on one interviews with each board member, central office administrators as well, and directors to gather input and refine the focus areas. I want to apologize, because I tell you what, when I do, when I sit through presentations, I, I really don't like it when you list a timeline, people read from it. But I don't know what other way I can do this, other than to get through it quickly. And if anyone has any questions over the time or the audio, just interrupt me and I'll, I'll try to answer your questions. Uh, but it'll give you at least an idea of where we've been with this. In June of twenty twenty-one, uh, we had staff groups, uh, staff focus groups conducted. July of twenty twenty-one, we updated the Board of Education. And in August, central office and district administrators, directors meet again for updates. October of twenty-one, Riverside staff was given the opportunity to take surveys. And throughout November and December of twenty twenty-one, central office needs to review the process, update the timeline delays due to COVID nineteen. Now, January of twenty twenty-two, uh, we had one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight student surveys that were completed in grade six and twelve. And we had eight hundred and forty-four parent community member surveys that were completed as well. Also in January, we held student focus groups at, uh, Lamuth, like I said, and at Riverside. Those are the numbers that I just gave you. To break it down a little bit more specifically, we had three groups of twelve at Lamuth for the focus groups. And we had five groups of twelve at Riverside. And then in February of twenty twenty-two, uh, parent community member focus groups are conducted. Um, and the Board of Education had a work session on, uh, February eleventh. We didn't have the, the, um, type of involvement we wanted to at the, uh, parent community member focus groups. We did offer, uh, different times of the day to make it work and deal with the parents. But we didn't have, uh, maybe the type of numbers that we really would like to have. We had, it was okay, but it wasn't as, as high as we would have liked. In March of twenty twenty-two, um, presentation of strategic plan with the advocacy partnerships and engagement, safety, climate, wellness, and fiscal responsibility, and teaching and learning. So those are the areas that we're going to present today. This is a, a little bit of a side note, as part of the plan, we're going to also, um, utilize, uh, and use some of the committees that exist here already, um, in terms of Business Advisory Council, Alumni Association, to get people involved in, um, in the strategic plan, uh, the, the, um, execution of the, uh, of the plan. Um, so when you look at what we have so far, this is what we have to look forward to right now, is the, um, upon the approval from the Board of Education, we'll identify the roles and expectations. But we want to get representation from all the stakeholders in our district. We put this, this plan together by using stakeholders. We didn't just get together as a school or as a, a group of educators or administrators and, 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 and create it in a vacuum. We did bring a lot of people in, see what it is that the community wants, because the school should always be a community, a reflection of the community. We're going to take that same philosophy and get people from outside the district to start working on our, our action plans and how we're going to get to our goals. It's not going to be just administration, it's not just going to be educators. We're going to look outside of, of just confines of the, the school. And we're going to get people involved in trying to execute and meet our goals that are established in the strategic plan. Um, that is one of the reasons why we have this here, is that, um, each of these committees will have initial meetings with the, where the committee members will learn about the process and discuss how the committee will work together to move the plan forward and how the action teams will communicate and meet. We're going to try to do it on a regular basis, and we're also going to try to report out to the board on a, on a regular basis as well, which is something we've done a little bit with this last plan, but not to the, to the amount, I think, that is necessary. Getting people involved to, to, um, present to, again, not necessarily always coming from administration, but coming from also the people that are involved in each of those committees. Um, we're going to create a hyperlink, committee notes, and the strategic plan documents, so committees are informed. And the annual committees will come together, review progress, make revisions of timelines and schedules, looking at those measurables and see whether or not we're being to where we need to be in terms of, of meeting our goals. Each of our central office administrators, uh, will be presenting one of the four focus areas tonight. And we're going to start with Mr. Kirabai.
So just to reiterate, um, a lot of things that, uh, each of us will be discussing, um, it's not coming from us as individuals, it's not coming from, uh, central office administrators. It's everything we're going to talk about, were common themes that, uh, we found throughout this whole process over the past year, uh, through the focus groups from student, staff, parents, and community members, through the surveys, and, uh, through some of the other things that we did through outreach. Uh, so the first, um, focus area is advocacy partnerships and engagement. Uh, the main goal, engage the Riverside community through communication, educational advocacy, and development of purposeful partnerships with local businesses and alumni. So how do we do that? Um, one of the main work plans would be to increase communication and transparency. Some of the action steps for that, um, provide training and develop shared practices to engage first-line communicators. You might ask what that means as a first-line communicator. That could be our bus drivers, it could be our, uh, lunch aids, it could be the recess aids, it could be some of the, uh, employees in our district who, who are non-teachers, who don't work with kids, you know, eight hours a day, aren't dealing with parents, um, on a nightly basis, um, kind of creating a, um, Riverside standard of customer service. So we talked about, um, in the beginning of each year, uh, bringing in professional development and how we want, uh, staff, all staff, but especially the ones who don't deal with students as much as the teachers, to, uh, how do we want staff to positively interact with students, um, and parents? So improve those, uh, streamlines of communication. Uh, another action step, uh, create a data-driven decision-making process for annual revisions of our communication plan. Uh, you recall in our last strategic plan, uh, one of the, uh, goals was to create a communication plan, which is, uh, something that we did back in two thousand fifteen. Um, so now we want to update that annually. Um, we're going to start putting out surveys annually. How do people want to be communicated to? How do businesses want to be communicated to? What are the streamlines of communication people are using, um, for information? And how do we adjust and adapt, uh, on a year-to-year basis? Um, another, uh, work plan, and, uh, I like this one a lot because I'm a big believer to increase external communication, your internal communication needs to be really strong. Um, so, uh, we talked about student leadership teams meeting with principals at each school. And what this does is, you know, kind of having student focus groups at each school meet with, uh, you know, the principal, maybe monthly, bimonthly, and just talk about what's going on in the schools, develop, uh, a closer relationship, um, build a stronger relationship. And, um, then, as time goes on, these students can become more vocal in the school and the community and kind of become student ambassadors, uh, for each, uh, school community within the district. Um, the next, uh, step for, um, developing business partnerships and engagement, uh, some of the works that, work, action steps, uh, in this one is to develop an educational advocacy plan and make Riverside a valuable voice to inform policy rather than react to it. We kind of talked about that a lot tonight. Um, a perfect example too is, you know, the Auburn Career Center situation to, uh, that occurred in the last couple of months. Uh, us being proactive, working with local, state, and federal, uh, officials, um, to, to collaborate and work together and not wait until something is already established and then we have to react. So hopefully being more proactive and, and working, collaborating, uh, to, to go on a step-by-step basis uh, before, you know, something is finalized. Uh, another work plan, strengthen our Business Advisory Council. We have one that currently exists, um, but a lot of new businesses in, uh, our, uh, district tap into those businesses, bring them onto the Business Advisory Council, enhance student opportunities, um, whether it's, you know, getting businesses involved where students can go to their businesses to, you know, for internships or just for shadow days, or whether it's just bringing in, uh, career, uh, speakers to talk to students. We kind of do that, uh, quite a bit here at the high school and the middle school. But going all the way down to the elementary school, um, would be, um, a big, uh, benefit for our district. Uh, and so Mr. Fischel's point, utilizing the Alumni Association to increase, uh, community engagement. We have a, obviously, every year, we have three hundred, three hundred and fifty kids graduate. Tapping into them as soon as they graduate, before they graduate, getting their information, uh, their personal email addresses, their personal phone numbers, and keeping them, you know, whether we establish, uh, just a newsletter for recent grads, um, just keeping them engaged, keeping them in touch, hoping they, uh, get onto that Alumni Association, um, because those could be, those, uh, individuals can be some of our biggest assets in the district. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Placko.
Okay, good. Thanks, Nick. All right, so my section is fiscal sensibility. And the, uh, the overall focus and goal is to maximize return on investment for all funding sources, uh, see through revenue streams, facilities, plan implementation, improve fiscal safety, and financial support, district priorities and strategies. Uh, there are three sections under this, uh, under fiscal sensibility. And the first one's facilities, improvements, and investments. And this one was a little tricky to write because, you know, as you know, we have the bond issue on the May third ballot, and depending on the results of that, will drastically change what direction we go as far as facility upgrades go. Um, so, you know, we'll see what the outcome is on the May third and, you know, figure out, you know, are we going to ship on a building new or are we going to come back to the drawing board and figure out, uh, what, how we can do from there? Uh, the next, uh, the next, um, action step is to decrease disparities between buildings. Um, you know, we have, I think this came out a lot in surveys, we have two new elementary schools, we have two legacy elementary schools, and the conditions of Lamuth Riverside, you know, different buildings have, are different conditions. And I think there's, um, some perception out there that we focus on certain buildings as opposed to other buildings. And how do we, how do we analyze that, kind of decrease disparity between buildings? And, and, you know, one of the things we're going to do, you know, individual principals and administrators, and figure out what we can do to, to improve the overall learning environment and conditions in each of our buildings. Um, the next one is to create a facilities inspection plan and make repair schedule more efficient. So kind of, you know, we have, you know, annual inspections of, of things and, and assessments. I think, you know, going back to when we had financial troubles about a decade ago, and a lot of people are, you know, hesitant to purchase the furniture or, you know, there's minor issues in classrooms and buildings that they can say, well, we don't have the money to fix this, and never really even inquire about whether or not we can make those improvements to kind of open up that line of communication. And, you know, we have, there's probably low-hanging fruit out there, basically, of things that we can do, small things that can be, that can make improvements. And then the last item is to, uh, to develop a five-year technology replacement schedule and just improve the overall technology and learning environment in our buildings. Uh, we're already working on, as I said, the committee, uh, to include our tech department, administration, uh, and students as well, and figure out. administration and students as well and figure out how, what, what things we can do and make technology better in our facilities. Uh, the next section, fiscal stability. Uh, the first action step is to develop a middle cash balance policy. Um, you know, we're in a much better financial condition than we've been in a long time and looking at developing a policy of how we move forward, how do we protect that, uh, financial position, you know, or what point do we make cuts and, or go for another levy in the future when that time eventually comes and just have a plan in place of kind of how, how we address that going forward. Also, it's, it's a best practice that's, uh, by GFOH, which is the Government Finance Officer Association, and it's also considered one of the things that they ask us when we do, when we issue bonds and get updated bond ratings, they always ask if we have a cash balance policy and what that looks like. Uh, and we'll get, you know, do we make it a formal policy of the board where, you know, we go through two reads and put it in the policy manual or do we make it a, a board revision and change if we update it? Not that you can't update policy, but there's more, uh, stuff to do that and, you know, we'll, we'll discuss what options we go with that. Uh, the next item is to develop a permanent improvement fund, long-term spending plan. We have a continuous permanent improvement levy and, um, you know, in prior years we had a lot of items, large items that were financed and we were paying payments on those with permanent improvement fund, those have all been paid off. And then we're now at a point where we're, we're building a cash balance and figuring out how do we prioritize those funds to, to make improvements. The third action step under fiscal stability is the seat grants and new revenue streams for district initiatives. We've been doing this, we've had a lot of grants issued between, you know, the welding lab grant, Chromebook grant, school bus grants and we want to continue that and, um, also make sure that we communicate those and let the community know that, you know, what we're doing and, you know, what we're getting funds for and how we use those. The final section is communication of district finances, uh, and looking at to establish and empower our financial action group. This is something that existed, uh, in the prior strategic plan and, um, I think in two thousand fifteen or sixteen it kind of fell apart, uh, whereas it came, I don't know if this is something where the transition treasure knows where it was approved or if this is something that was, was just not maintained. Looking at the real issue and having, you know, external stakeholders involved and helping people understand the finances of the district. And also conducting external meetings to help stakeholders better understand how we're saying makes decisions with the funding, you know, why do we put in turf as opposed to doing something else and, you know, kind of explaining those were better and doing more of a state of schools addresses and local events and presenting to trustees and council meetings in our community and just kind of getting more information out about the financial, financials of the district. And also writing at least one financial article in all of the district publications. Um, it's reading through all the comments from the community and the strategic, you know, from the surveys, you know, a lot of people, not a lot, but there's a few comments in there about fiscal responsibility and needing more fiscally responsible, but never really gave me direction or, or any insight of what that might be. So I think at least we thought that maybe it's just a, a lack of understanding or, you know, just putting more information out there so people understand, uh, just different things about the district, you know, talking about things like what the cell tower generates, what kind of casino revenue we get, you know, what does this first school funding plan look like and kind of just more formalizing that so there's just more information out in the public to understand, uh, you know, how to do that. Now, it's just the safety, climate, wellness.
Okay, so the, um, committee that I'm on with Mr. Shalik, who unfortunately is under the weather today, is broken into three parts, safety, climate, wellness. And basically our overall focus is to make the society safe, healthy, a happy place to work and learn through the development of healthy organizational habits. Okay, so we had, um, several different areas of focus. The first is to develop, develop staff celebrations and support programming. And, um, actions under this area would include to develop a staff celebration and recognition program. And I know we've already really started to do that, I think, um, with the last working, I believe, um, Mallory had presented our recognition, uh, handbook that she had developed, um, across the district. So that was one of the things that's already been, um, put in place. And, and several of the, um, the areas that we're addressing tonight, we, we already have some things in the works and being, um, currently taking place, so. Um, and then the second, uh, area was increasing publicized employee support programming to basically improve employee, um, engagement, decrease absences and then increase employee retention and recruitment. And again, we have several things already in place, um, that are working along those lines. And then another one was to increase accountability for staff and create monitoring protocols and coaching opportunities. And again, this is to, the focus is to improve employee engagement and ongoing performance engagement. The next area that we, um, identified, that was identified through a few different surveys and focus groups was proactively identify, oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I was picking on my computer, it's easier to make it clear. Okay, so proactively identify at-risk students and create programs to address student and mental health. And the first, again, action area is develop a disciplinary discipline protocol, um, and tier one, two and three supports. This also aligns, um, currently with our PBIS support system, which is positive behavior intervention, intervention supports, which is a state mandated, um, or state mandate. And then improve relationships between students and teachers by building empathy. And again, stronger adult and student relationships throughout between students, understanding shared perspectives of another. And then, uh, the last action here, uh, step was to create a system to identify at-risk students and staff and connect them to resources and programming to address mental health, online safety and substance abuse. And again, um, mental health was an area that was, um, pretty loudly heard across several different focus groups. And then, um, another area was to increase communication and shared decision-making. And this was increased opportunities for student input and feedback on school policy. And, uh, to increase student engagement at all levels throughout the district. And then, uh, the other action was to, a step was to increase awareness and appreciation related to diversity and inclusivity. And again, increasing the, um, diversity and inclusivity opportunities at all levels throughout the district. Um, last, I believe this is increased safety. And this was basically looking at improving safety of facilities, increase safety features and protocols established in, um, all existing buildings. I know this was something that was, um, focused heavily when we built our two new elementary buildings as well. And then improve monitoring of students to ensure safety. And, um, again, it's basically increasing the monitoring and safety for the Riverside community as a whole. And I'll move it over to Melissa.
I will bring us on home. So teaching and learning is the last, um, area that we looked at for the strategic plan. And our overarching goal is to expand program options and delivery to meet the needs of each student and to grow teacher capacity and efficacy. So not only do we want our students to learn, but we want our teachers to continue to learn and grow also. The first, uh, goal is expand courses and programs to address the needs of all students. Our action steps, and again, much like Nick and Cheryl said, we heard this across the board, implementing life skills courses and embedding those, that life skill instruction into current courses. Outcome measures would be the development of those life skills in students to improve attendance, graduation and engagement. We want to extend career exploration and pathway programming into the elementary and increa- increase career readiness opportunities and technical courses. This one we had to, because you know, we've already started doing some of this at the high school and some, some minor things at the middle school, so we kind of had to break it down into levels. So we have outcome measures for each level. Um, high school will be increasing those course offerings, middle school is updated offering with what we can do within that middle school schedule. And then elementary schools, we want to start to bring those career exploration activities down into the elementary level. And then create enrichment and remediation programs. So we would like to have one new enrichment program at each level for our students who are excelling or who have an interest in additional programming. And then we'd like to have a K-12 MTSS in place, and that's a multi-tiered system of support, and that's the intervention piece. So we really want to take a hard look at how we're, um, contributing with our students who struggle and make sure that we have a comprehensive program in place, K-12. Next goal is to develop shared instructional expectations. We'd like to develop a shared protocol that divides the ideal instructional environment for students and shows a deep understanding of special education. The understanding of special education came up across, um, numerous groups, not only from parents who had students with special needs, but, but regular ed teachers and even some classified staff. And so we would just like to understand students who have, better understand students who have special needs. So the, um, and, and then we want to couple that in with defining the ideal instructional environment, which might be more personalization and blended learning. So identifying those teaching, teaching expectations for each level. Um, updating facilities to enable innovative instructional practices and programming, um, so that spaces exist in each building to accommodate the changing needs of the offered programs. This one is, you got your, you got some action step and you got your outcome and you got nothing in the middle of this one until we see where we're going, um, in the direction of, um, from the outcome of the levy. So we know what we want to do, we want to update or build new facilities so that we can accommodate the programming, the outcome being spaces exist in each building, how we get there has yet to be defined. So you will see that when you look at the overall plan. Uh, we want to use data to drive instruction, the outcome measures being improved student scores on standardized assessments, including that, the Ohio State test, the ACTs, those kind of tests. And then finally, we want to provide head quality staff development. We are a business of people, not only how we deliver our service, but to the students that we deliver to. So we want to get better as teams. Patty questioned me on that, on the use of the word, get better as teams, but that's, that's part of our culture playbook and so I, I left it proudly against her better judgment. But it's going to involve a series of steps that get us to the point of having instructional round teams and taking learning walks and learning from each other's practice as educators. They do this in a lot of other professions and businesses and we'd like to start to do that here so that we can, we as the educators can grow, um, and learn from each other. We want to increase classified and certified staff awareness of specific student needs, not only special occasion, education, but behavior concerned, students without, um, the designation of special education, but may just have, um, behavior issues, um, students who are gifted. So all types of students require different need, or have different needs and require different things, so we want to build that capacity. The outcome being classified and certified staff will have an increased understanding of specific student needs and strategies to deal with those needs. And then finally, we want to provide central office and building leadership, professional development and support to improve instructional supervision so that we'll have that growth in administrative leadership effectiveness. So those are the teaching and learning. Um, the final slide here, Patty, I'm going to ask you if you want to jump in. You know, we use the one community pursuing greatness and getting better every day because that came directly from our culture playbook and that playbook was developed with all of our, our staff, with students, um, had input into that and we felt it was really important to bring that piece in also so it doesn't get lost. Those are our goals and our values that should drive the work that we do. Patty, you have something you want to add?
Thank you. So I was kind of prepared to talk at the front end, so I'm now going to work on the back end of this to have this conversation. So I'm going to shift backwards. Um, one of the things that first and foremost, thank you Board of Education, thank you Dr. Kalis and your team for doing this hard work. It was not always easy. And when Melissa made a little joke about better, um, the word there that was in that, um, there was a lot of wordsmithing and critiquing that went into this to make sure that the plan was something that wasn't just rhetoric, that it wasn't, like Dr. Kalis said, a book that was created and put on a shelf. The district should not be investing in resources that you're not going to follow through with and actually take the district to the next level. Whether it's a facility, whether it's the academic learning, whether it's the safety in the environment in which the students and staff, um, come to school every day in, those things are what you're here for. And when we talked a little bit about, you know, staff, I think one of the things when Gary was talking about the finance or the fiscal sensibility, there were a couple of things that came up in the focus groups and in the surveys that really resonated. There is not an understanding, because it is so complex, of how schools are funded. And so we as human beings have our own finances, we might own a company, we might be, you know, just our own finances, helping an elderly parent. So we look at our own experience and we try to relate it to a school budget, it's not relatable. So what we did in developing the plan was try to make each one of these as relatable as we could possibly make them, but keep them with goals that could be measured. Another point to Dr. Kalis's conversation is really about the measurement. Again, we can create these wonderful goals and we, we minimize the goals. We started to create what you saw were the action steps, which are part of the strategic plan, but we know that measurement is going to be the key to, to what we do. There might be places where we have to shift or we don't achieve, but we need to be able to come to the table and say, we set this goal, we created these action steps, we didn't get here because this happened. None of us would have ever predicted COVID, none of us would have ever, you know, thought about the learning loss for kids and how it would have changed our environment. We don't know what that next step is, but as the leadership team just described today, there are measurements in place. My job along with Dr. Regal's job will be to continue to monitor the progress on the, the goals, the action steps. We'll be meeting in April and May with the action teams. Dr. Regal and myself have split them up to make sure that there are actual tasks that go into it. And I believe Board of Education, you have a little bit more information that was delivered potentially yesterday that started to show the outline of the action steps? And if you didn't, we'll be getting that to you shortly.
I have a packet I was going to hand out at the conclusion of this.
There's much more information than what you saw here. This was a condensed version because it's a lot of information. And I'm just sitting here going, it's, you know, two or three hours into this, you know, attention spans start to, to move off into the distance. So this was a plan to kind of talk at a higher level. There's a lot more detail, um, that's involved in it that's already been developed. Again, action teams will be meeting, developing. Any community members that would like to become part of a, of an action team are certainly welcome to contact a Dr. Kalis's office and they can be, you know, put into the right person and get on a, on a team. For this to be successful, as you look at the top corner, one community, and that's what Riverside is. It's communities, people, residents who support the school district, administration, staff, teachers that come together to work in the better interest of all kids or the best interests of all children, making sure that they're getting where they need to be. Big plan, lots of work, they covered on all of the areas, as you started to talk about advocacy right from the start, Mr. Hack, you know, and, and Ms. Rossi, about getting your voices heard at a different level, that's built in here now. It looks different than the last plan because the last plan was a different point in time, it was 2013, it, finances were not good, there were lots of pieces, parts that needed to, to come together. The district has made great strides in that time, so this looks much different than that plan. Any questions that you have from the perspective of the process? Dr. Regal and I were brought in to oversee the process and to make sure that those areas that we felt were questionable, um, were addressed. Those words that we didn't think people understood, and I still see a couple of acronyms in here I'd like to have cleaned up. Um, I'm joking, I'm joking.
Oh, I was going to say, I was trying to say, I was trying to stay real firm.
I'm a non-acronym person, you need to talk in an English language that any person can pick this document up and understand what it means and actually see that there is something that's going to take the district forward, move the district forward. Um, Dr. Kalis talked all about the surveys, there was a lot of data that went into this, as you mentioned, the numbers. We were impressed with the student body. I can't say enough about the students and their input. They were sixth graders, two twelfth graders when, um, Mr. Placko was talking about finances. The question, I think I may have The question I think I may have shared with you at a previous meeting was really about the stadium. Where do the monies go when you collect money from a football game? And so the students were asking those questions. So in my mind, those are some of the things that Mr. Placko will start to address. It's a common sense, I'm going to call them common sense responses to, these are some of the easy pieces we can get out to the community as we start to talk about going forward. So again, I thank you. Questions that you might have about the process, anything that you heard here tonight?
So I just want to say, this is our one page, this will be basically our one pager that sits out for the public.
Those are the goals, correct. There will be multiple action steps underneath those goals.
Right. And from previous iterations, I would like to thank you and Dr. Regal for, you know, all the hard work that you guys have done. I know that you've been involved in the past, you've been involved in past strategic plans and seen where our district was 2013 and how far we have come since then is tremendous, at least in my opinion. But that's probably due to the work done from the strategic plan. They really did guide this district in what it is that we did. And I think we've made great strides, and I think a lot of that also has to do with the fact that, that you are also an external person who can hold, hold to those folks accountable on behalf of the district. Do you know what I mean? There, it's a, it's a plan, it's a process, but sometimes those things get, they fall by the wayside. And I think that having those check-ins and having those things in place in the future, I think are fabulous. And so I just want to take this time to, to thank you and Dr. Regal for taking the time to do all this. It's been, it's been a long process. You've been around for a long time. And again, having that understanding of all that past, I think, is fantastic. Thank you. We will be accepting the entire plan at our April meeting? Is that the, is that the plan?
We should put it on for adoption in April.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to treasurer's report and committee update. So Mrs. Grassi, finance, an audit personnel committee, and strategic plan.
I don't think we really have anything to say about the strategic plan.
You want us to do the presentation again?
What's that?
You want us to do the presentation again?
No, I think we're good with that. So again, I'll just move on. We had a finance and personnel meeting on March 17th at 8:00 a.m. We talked about just a couple of topics in addition to the items that were on our board agenda. We spent a good deal of our time talking about the Luth boiler as well. So we talked about the budget that we had for that. We talked about the bid process. We did talk a little bit about the hiring of some student monitors for the high school, and those are on the agenda. And so that was, it was a pretty brief meeting, and that was, that was what we had discussed, and that's all I have.
And an update. Mr. Placko?
Okay, just wanted to circle around the Luth boiler one last time. Just a little more information, that replacement project, that was in the works for months to get out to bid. We opened bids on March 14th, which was a few days after the existing boilers went down. We had an estimate of $400,000 in the project. The lowest bid, lowest responsive bid in a $374,280 from the contractor SA Communal. They will start in June as soon as the school lets out with completion date by September 30th. And we wrote into these contracts that they're signing liquidated damages if they don't complete by October 15th, as we need to have boilers for the next school year, the next season. Also on site's agenda is approval of the external boiler we had to bring in. Normally purchases over $15,000 are approved by the board in advance, but board policy decided to declare emergency and make that purchase without coming to the board because obviously we are going to keep the school closed until the next board meeting, so we go ahead and move forward with that. And then, just to give an update, Leroy Elementary School, we finally closed on sale of that property on March 29th, and we're in the process of getting utilities transferred over to the township as they continue to work on trying to get grant to fund the other half of demolition facility. And then lastly, our annual financial audit, audit should be wrapping up very soon. It's under final review at Downtown. As of right now, no issues, and we should be getting the audit state of work once that's finalized. A little behind this year, usually we have it a couple of months earlier, so I'm not sure. They started the audit, they've been live for a few months, and they came back, so this is how they do their schedules, and hopefully that gets wrapped up soon. That concludes our report.
Thank you. That brings us to public participation. So anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic, and comments are limited to three minutes.
Good news, I'm out here talking about Platte. My name is Al Adams, 6868 Melvin Drive. My topics are Auburn, the social media, and a question for Mr. Placko about the fair funding, fair school funding plan. Is there a clock today?
I have, I'm just checking.
Okay. Well, we didn't start yet. The first thing I wanted to do was thank you for writing a letter to offer. I really appreciate the responsiveness from us coming to the meeting and asking that you guys take care of that, sending it in. I would say the thing...
You know what? I wanted to verify something earlier today. It's happened a lot. Well, can we ask the number of times I've talked to Mr. or Dr. Bontempo? It's probably more like three. I talked to him a couple of times after our last board meeting. So after I, after I said one time, I'm thinking to myself, I don't want you to think that I'm not advocating for our students. I am, but I did talk to him probably about three times. The most recent one was actually today. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm not, not saying I'm not.
So the thing I wanted to say was, I heard the metric you're using about the number of students that got in, you know, the ultimate answer for that situation is exactly what Dr. Kalas said, expand the seats, expand the teachers, do whatever to do. It's very popular right now at school. And until they do that, this idea of removing meritocracy where they were basing admission on grades, interviews, recommendations, attendance, and disciplinary actions has been removed, and it's a straight lottery. So the straight lottery, you can hit the same numbers, but are you putting in the most qualified students? It's not like coming here. It's like, it's like going to a university, a junior college. You know, you're going in there for a trade. Until they fix the number of seats, this is a meritocracy. Amazon's not going to pull your name out of a hat to get a job, and that's who those kids are going there for. That is what the, the part that brought everybody to be upset. They didn't address any of the school boards that feed the district or this board and their own school board. Half of them didn't know about it, which is a violation of the ORC, which was the big problem, or any of the 500 companies that feed that school. The other thing was related to your strategic plan, and this will be the third time I brought it up. This is the only event you don't put on your social media sites. You told me that it has to be published in the paper. I read my newspaper all week. I did not see this meeting in the paper. That's required by law. You have to go through three pages on the website to get there, and that's not convenient. If social media is not a good way to communicate with all the people in this district, then why is the community information meetings there, sporting events, spring break, events in the school all put there, but not this meeting? The only thing I could do is draw more public participation to help you with your transparency and communication with the parents. If they would show up and listen, which is why I come, so I can speak intelligently about this outside of here. The last thing was, three minutes. Mr. Placko, in the January 27th meeting, just before we put the levy on ballot, you were going over the fair funding, and she's 100% correct. How the school is funded, there's a Yiddish term called a mishigash, meaning it's not meant to be understood. I don't understand it, but there was two temporary things on there in the fair school funding plan. One was actually temporary and one wasn't. And Mr. Hack made a comment when you said that, if it went through over that six-year period, it was about 10% of the operating budget, I think you said. I heard you at the informational meeting say, the last one, if legislation stayed the change, legislation stayed the same, there won't be a change. So which is it?
Can we have Mr. Placko, I think he'll get it and follow up on the questions? Thank you. Any other public participation?
Hi, I'm Chris Weiss, and I live in Leroy. And, you know, again, I continue to be here in opposition to this school bond levy. The reason is, is not that I'm against the schools. I'm not against the kids having a good facility to learn. In fact, we have a great school district. Kids do extremely well. We outperform quite a few other school districts. In fact, we absolutely outperform Painesville City, who has the newest school buildings. And there's an example, case in point, having brand-new buildings doesn't make your school district good. They are the worst performing school district in the county with the brand, brand-new buildings. Okay? The reason I'm against this levy again is because you guys have decided to put a bond levy out when you don't have construction drawings, blueprints, any kind of cost estimates that are relevant to the building you're going to build. You're taking a guess at what it's going to cost, and you're expecting us to pay for it and fund it, and then let you figure it out as you go. I was at Parkside Elementary two days ago, and Ms. Grassi had her architect stand up and talk about, you know, well, if we, if we find that the cost of the school is greater than what we can afford to build, we'll make changes along the way. Okay? That was her exact words. And I got to tell you, that is the worst recipe for disaster in a construction project. Once you've dug your foundations and started to build, how are you going to change things? Okay? Change orders add enormous amounts of time and cost to the project. Okay? In regards to the two elementary schools you built, you spent $38.5 million for two elementary schools, but you sold two schools for $610,000. What a deal. You, you want another school district to move in here, the Educational Service Center for the Western Reserve. My own son went there. He took the eighth grade in four months, knocked it out. Now he's a ninth grader. Okay? Why, you know, those school buildings are still being utilized as school and administration buildings. So why did we have to build a $38 million, two elementary schools? Additionally, you walk around in those schools, my son is a fifth grader at Parkside. His classroom is four times the size of a normal classroom. Okay? And he's a fifth grader. The teacher has to try to hem the kids in and get them to sit down and pay attention and learn. Okay? And that's one of the problems that they're having in this brand-new school. Okay? The other thing you guys bring up in here, and you're going to improve the traffic flow on Route 84. How are you going to do that? It's one road going past the school. You still have the same problem. Okay? What my point being is that this pipeline document does not accurately reflect what you're doing. This is a propaganda document to get this school levy passed, and it doesn't speak to the risks and the problems associated with what you're trying to do. Okay? The biggest risk is you get this levy to pass, you dump the money in the bucket, you start construction, and then you find out you can't afford to finish the project, and then you default on the financial instruments, which is exactly what Painesville City did. Okay? So that's another problem. And I'll wrap up just here and quick, really quickly here. Okay? The other thing is, on your own slides, you put up that the, the operating cost to maintain Riverside is a quarter of a million dollars a year. That's a deal compared to 147 million.
Mr. Weiss, the time is up. Please. Any other public participation at this point? That brings us to our consent agendas. First consent agenda is finance laudate.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through J, with the exception of item B, which we're pulling out and voting on separately after executive session.
Second.
Did I read that okay, Gary?
Yes. Item C through J, but not items D, Z, and B.
But not either.
Sessionally, we do see.
Right. Okay. I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I just want to read the donations as we normally do and thank these, these organizations and individuals. So we had a donation of $2,000 from Riverview PTO to Riverview Elementary for second grade books. We had $200 from Deanna Hodge to the Riverside Art Club. We had $250 from the Murdery Club of Painesville to the Drama Department. We had $50 from Donald Neagley to the Riverside Softball. And we had $25 from Gerald and Cheryl Lane to Riverside Softball. And we'd just like to acknowledge and thank those individuals and organizations for those donations. Do we have any other discussion on any of the agenda items?
So I, I do have a question on item B, which is the Roachford, I have not pronounced that correctly, Therapy Services. Can anybody describe that and what is the dollar value associated with it?
I, I can tell you that it is the, it's the agency that we contract with for all of our occupational therapy services in the district. I certainly could give you an actual dollar figure. I can't give it to you off the top of my head tonight, but I could give you that information.
And those are required in special education services?
Those are services that, yes, are required for special education students that qualify for occupational therapy.
It works, you know, it comes out of, it comes out of a...
It depends. And we do have, just, just so everybody knows, we do have some students who have 504 plans that also may have occupational therapy on their 504 plan, which would not necessarily then be able to be paid for through special education money. So it really depends on the student and the situation, what type of plan they have. But for the most part, the majority of those students are all special education students with probably just a select few on 504 plans.
Cheryl, are some of those, some of those there, some of those, because they're occupational therapy, they can be covered by Medicaid perhaps?
They all bill for Medicaid services.
Yeah.
Reimbursement through our Medicaid billing company.
Right.
So they're all billing, and you can get that, those reimbursed services. We also have, so we have occupational therapists, and we also have certified occupational therapy assistants that are providing therapy. Now, they can't do things like evaluations, but they are at a reduced cost. So we do, we do have a variety of ways that we're servicing our students for, to be more, most efficient from a financial standpoint.
And just as an aside, also, that puts into our catastrophic cost bucket, which then gets reimbursed by the state to a very small degree at the end of the year when we total all that on.
I would also like to get as an independent contract, because we contract for these services. So we're only paying for when services are rendered. They don't get sick days, they don't get benefits, so it is, it is more cost efficient for us to, to go this route. And this is probably, gosh, I think we've been with Roachford now for, it's been at least six years, if not more.
It's been a long time.
Yes, it has. I think we did two, three-year contracts, but maybe a one or two in between there. Yeah, I think so, yeah.
True. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion on these? All right, Mr. Placko, can you call the roll?
Lori Kowalski.
Aye.
Lori Kowalski.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A to G. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So any discussion on these items?
All right. Congratulations to people on the list who have served the district for many, many years.
Our retirement. If there's nothing further, can we call the roll?
Lori Kowalski.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lori Kowalski.
Aye. Motion carried. Next is consent agenda for curriculum and programming.
The motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A and B. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Just the school, if, if we prove this, the school calendar, I'm sure people will be wanting to know that as soon as we leave this meeting.
Okay. Mr. Placko, please call the roll.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Lori Kowalski.
Aye. Motion carried. Next is our Board of Education update. Any updates?
I just, I'm not a board of education member. I just thought of this, Dr. Kalas, that we probably, we had two... Pretty much, Mrs. Grassi? Any, any discussion?
All right, here you go. Call the roll please.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Glenda Grassy?
Aye.
Gloria Kuduski?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next is our Board of Education update. Any updates?
I just, not aboard my chair. But I just thought of this, Dr. Kayla said we probably, we had two student groups.
I was going to, go ahead.
Oh, were you?
I was going to do a deep roll, but.
Oh, I just was.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, we had sent an email that we had three groups go down to the OSBA Capitol Conference, if you remember. Two of those groups recently got recognized by our regional chapter of OSBA. So, I took the crew down because a little bit of a proud mama moment. My son happened to be one of those groups, so it was the recognizing RHS podcast group and the side leadership group. So, we went down on Monday to Warren and they received a certificate. It was a long meeting and they called them up and they got certificates. So, it was, they were troopers and we had dinner and all that good kind of stuff, but I just wanted to give, to let you guys know that we took them down there. It was a good experience for them. They're looking to expand the groups that go to OSBA beyond just that side leadership group, so it's kind of a neat thing for our students to get outside our walls and do that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think the, I think the, the representation of school districts at the, at that Capitol Conference, the student groups that go, it's, it's really fascinating what they do, just to walk around there and just see the things that they put forth. It's really cool. And I guess I'd mention also the musical, Mamma Mia, if anyone had a chance to see it, but that was excellent. I love it, so, I don't know if anyone else had a chance to see it, but they did a great job. And, and last, I, again, I want to, I want to thank not, not just Patty and Dr. Regal, I just want to actually thank the staff and, and people in this district that took the time to devote a long year or more to the strategic plan. We've been talking about the update to the strategic plan for a long time here and so, anybody who was involved in that, I do want to thank them for participating in that and doing the work that leads to this progress that we make here, so.
Anything else? All right, so I will make a motion for us to adjourn to executive session at 9:12 p.m. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Placko, can you?
Gloria Kuduski?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Placko, can you?
Second.
You can pick.
All right, Gloria Kuduski?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Glenda Grassy?
Aye.
Motion carried. We're going to return to the finance consent agenda.
I don't have my agenda, but we are going to vote on what was previously item B in the agenda to vote on a settlement approval.
Resolution to approve a settlement agreement release and waiver.
We're good. Do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hack? Do we, we have no other discussion on this?
I'm sure we should have a question?
I don't know. What have we just voted on?
Do we didn't vote yet?
Oh, gosh, okay.
All right, we don't have, do we have any other? I'm sorry, do we have any other discussion on this agenda item? No.
May you call the roll, Mr. Placko?
Gloria Kuduski?
Aye.
Tom Hack?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
All right. Way to end a meeting.
Motion to close the meeting. Everybody know what our next meetings are?